Jason, today's episode of the Lee Summit Town Hall podcast is brought to the good people by Budget Blinds of Lee Summit.
Budget Blinds.
Jason, our robot shade overlords are back at it again.
They are. Look, we are, we are coming up upon the holidays and I'm gonna say this year, it's been hard to do good out in the world stuff. And Budget Blinds has been trying.
They have.
And they can't resist it. They have to do some good stuff for Christmas time.
So in the last few years, Budget Blinds has teamed up with us here at Link to Lee Summit. We've hosted a special story night with Santa. Kids come, they listen to Santa tell stories. We've got pictures with Santa. Well, I'm sure you guessed, we're not doing that this year.
You're not gonna cram a whole bunch of people in the store and do that because COVID ruins everything.
But those people over at Budget Blinds, they're pretty creative. So here's what we're doing. We've got a special live stream event with Santa planned for Thursday, December 17th. Santa's gonna join us live from his North Pole office.
And let's give, let's give Santa some props for getting Zoom up there. That's pretty impressive. We get the bandwidth all the way to the North Pole.
I wonder if he gets Google Fiber and if he does, is he paying as cheap as we are?
Uh, he probably has to pay a couple of extra bucks. There's probably something with the Canadian thing that that's gonna mess it all up.
So Santa's gonna read some of his favorite holiday stories and he's gonna answer some of your questions. So if you are watching along, you can type out some questions. We'll pass them to Santa and he's ready to answer all of them. And as always, our friends at Budget Blinds of Lee Summit, they wanted to do a little extra good. So we're gonna take donations during this live, live stream event too. Donations for Lee Summit Social Services are encouraged during that stream. You can follow our Storytime with Santa event page on Facebook for more information as we get closer. Oh yeah. Hey, Jason, you better make sure you're on the nice list if you're gonna watch.
You know, I reached a point at a certain age that I realized that the nice list is purely aspirational for me. So, but we're gonna try. I'm gonna try to get on the nice list so, so that I can get in and watch Storytime with Santa.
Well, so thank you to our friends at Budget Blinds of Lee Summit for making this live stream event happen on Thursday, December 17th. Make sure you are there to watch. And hey, if you're looking to do some stuff around the house, go see our friends at Budget Blinds. Tell them Jason next thing.
Hello again, and welcome to Lee Summit Town Hall, a weekly podcast about what you can do to make a difference. I am Jason Norbury and as always, I am joined by a man who would, let's be honest, much rather be sitting with the new book and reading it than doing this podcast this very second. It's Nick Parker, the publisher of Link to Lee Summit.
That's so true, man. I, I've come to cherish my reading time.
We, we sat through, we've been, look, I'm gonna say this, like, we're out of a public meeting shape, like, we've been, we have been, we've been lucky that the, generally speaking, the governance bodies for many of these last several months have had nothing like, it's gonna take like long times for us to sit and watch these meetings. And tonight we had a doozy and we are recording this on Tuesday night right before, and you'll be getting this on Wednesday right after, I'm sorry, right after the R7 School Board. And it was a three and a half hour meeting and man, I'm wiped. I wore out just sitting here watching that meeting for that time.
Instant analysis, it didn't need to be three and a half hours.
It didn't need to be three and a half hours. So, uh, Link to Lee Summit, because we're gonna give this to you is the source for all the news you need about this very fine city. And our unofficial sponsor today should be expertise, but as we're gonna find out, it may not be. So Nick, what's going on?
Expertise.
Part of the men are expertise. What, what, uh, what's going on in the community?
Okay. So we sat around and I'm like, hmm, what's our topic gonna be in the next week? That's just one thing on our minds right now, Jason.
And it ruins everything.
It's COVID. Hey, so here's the, here's what we're gonna do. We're just gonna do a quick breakdown of what's going on right now. A, as everybody knows, new COVID response restrictions and guidelines have been put out by the Jackson County Health Department. Those go into effect 12:01 AM on Friday. Jason, just, just what are the new rules?
Okay. So first things, short version is no, we are not allowed to have nice things. That, that is the thing. The, uh, the numbers are in the community are outrageous. The, the case rates are something on the order of triple what they were a couple of weeks ago. Positivity rates are.
Twenty-seven percent.
Right. Which is more than double what it was a couple of weeks ago. It is, it is real, real bad. And with Thanksgiving coming, uh, there's anticipated to be a lot of travel and things of that nature. So the health departments and, and Jackson County partnered up with Wyandotte County, specifically the little weird combination of the core four, Kansas City, Missouri, and Johnson County had their own very, very similar standards, but not exactly the same standards that came, that are gonna be in place as well. But here's the basic gist. Uh, beginning Friday, uh, public gatherings are going to be limited to 50% of the lowest occupancy load for a facility with masks required at all times, which isn't actually, I think a change, uh, you know, except for the eating part. Uh, this is including recreational facilities, parks, gyms, nightclubs, outdoor events, and includes school sporting events. So these are rules that are going to have an impact on, especially as we move into, uh, as we'll touch on in a little bit in the, in the R7 portion of our evening, uh, winter sports, these are things that are gonna be there. Bars and restaurants are all gonna be limited to 50% occupancy and they're instituting a curfew, uh, that everybody has to close at 10:00 PM. You have to be seated and masked, except when you're actively eating or drinking, uh, no big dinner parties. So like eight or fewer, six feet of distance, you know, it's all the, some, some of the stuff we had, I think back in the lockdown, um, edited for our times. And then no other large public gatherings of more than 10 people. Um, just don't do that, please, uh, as a thing. So those are rules that are going into impact, um, on there. Um, there, this is something that's happening. It's not just in Kansas City. It's not just in various, it's all over the place that these rules are coming in because the, the case rates nationwide are spiraling upwards. And it's very, very bad and very scary.
So let's move on now to the, uh, the, the, kind of the next aspect of this, which is looking at it from the perspective of the, of the local school district, the Lee Summit R7 School District. And Jason, they had a special session of the Board of Education on Tuesday night and a lot of people were curious to, to, to find out what happened. I can't, I saw at one point over 2,600 viewers of that live stream on YouTube. So a lot of the community is paying attention to see what happened and how, and what changes are gonna happen that are gonna affect their lives because hey, school's hard this year. Everything's hard this year. But let's start, Jason, with, with, let's start with some numbers again, because what happened was, this started out with Superintendent Dr. David Buck outlining the numbers, um, that, that we all see. And, and then, and then he moved into what the recommendation, but I wanna, first I wanna start with some of the numbers, Jason, that, that Dr. Buck brought up.
Okay. So the short version is Dr. Buck said essentially that we have moved from sort of a low grade, you know, people in, people out, what have you, into a in-school community spread situation, um, in the district. So just to give you an idea, two weeks ago, the two reporting, two weeks ago, had 28 new cases that were reported to and associated with people involved in the district. Last week it was 61 and then the reports that came out just today, 123 new cases. So it doubled. And then it doubled again, which is the nightmare scenario that they tell you about, right? When you're paying attention to the, in those first days of that. Uh, a similar, the quarantine numbers tripled from last week to this week. Um, one of our elementary schools, uh, has reached over, I think the number they used was a 20% positivity rate, uh, in the building and they just, they sent the whole school home. Um, and they are in a two-week virtual, uh, shutdown essentially for the building. So the building is essentially closed for two weeks to that. There have been, um, a total like well over 400 cases now total for the district since they went back to school. Winter sports are starting.
Yeah.
So fall sports are primarily outdoor, right? And running around on big fields, lots of ventilation and they didn't have.
Mostly over.
And mostly over now, but they didn't have a lot of the, they didn't have huge numbers issues with that. But now that we're moving indoor, uh, there were, there are 53 winter sports teams in the district is what the, the superintendent told us. 16 of those have already had a full quarantine and six other ones are under a partial quarantine. So that's basically almost half the school, the sports teams are already having quarantine issues there. They, we've had multiple cases of in-school spread, which is the thing they didn't really have or didn't have evidence of earlier on.
And I think it's important to note, one of the other aspects of this that, that he brought up with, with these, these numbers was, they talked a lot about being able to, to bring substitute teachers in when, when staff is out, that, that rate of, of filling with substitutes. And can they keep it up?
And the answer was they don't think they can, or they couldn't because of, uh, the number of teachers that were already quarantined. I would assume the number of substitutes that they had available to them as well as the ones that were quarantined and maybe choosing not to work because they don't want to be exposed in a school environment. Um, so they, they were having, that was a major issue that was there. So then the superintendent, um, had conversations as they have, I think probably every week, probably since the, well, since the summer with the health department. The superintendent and the staff, after talking to the teachers and, and staff and administration and all the various and sundry things, recommended that, uh, all grades K through, or basically every, every student goes virtual, starting Monday, the 23rd till, uh, essentially through the end of the first semester of classes.
Which, which is January 25th.
Right. Uh, one of the reasons they said this, uh, was that the teachers at the elementary level were requested that, uh, basically they either all are in person or they all go in virtual, um, and not to split them like they have been doing up until literally this, until literally this week, um, to do that. So that, that is, that was a request from the teachers amongst some other ones. And, and the superintendent's recommendation was to give them that. There, there's the sort of the procedural standpoint and then we get to the, uh,
And then we get to this, then we get to the, the, the school board takes up the conversation. Um, and that's where it got, I think it got, it got a little interesting. Instead of doing, Jason, instead of doing one motion to consider the, the recommendation for all grade levels, as, as was recommended by, by Dr. Buck, the, the board members decided to tackle this in three phases. First, they wanted, they wanted to talk about just secondary, so grades seven through 12. Then they wanted to talk about grades four through six, and then they wanted to talk about pre-K through three. And, and I wanted, I want to mention here, the reason they broke out the four through six was in those conversations with the county, doctors, Dr. Buck said that the county health officials said that they were starting to see enough of a rise in cases, uh, from age 10 up that they, that for, for, for Lee Summit School District, that means grades four and up. So that that's why that, they started thinking a little bit more about, about keeping those grades kind of in the same conversation as they have the secondary grades.
Yes. And, and keep in mind, um, so procedurally speaking, and there was literally hours of talking and questions about all sorts of subject matters, about subrates and all the various and sundry, um, special or individual populations in the district and how, how virtual is, would the shift to virtual would impact them, whether shit, another thing that the teachers requested was, uh, the elementary teachers had really requested that they only, they didn't want to have to change and then change back. Like they wanted to have a consistent thing going forward. So.
Which is something Dr. Buck talked about, Jason. We first had him on, on the podcast, uh, when they were, when they were discussing the stuff back in August, right? Was that, that he said, we don't want a yo-yo.
Right.
When, when we make a decision to, to, to go from one to the other, we want to be able to stick with it.
And, and so that's where a lot of this conversation started to fall around. And so they broke it into, instead of having, as you noted, one vote on the superintendent's recommendation, they decided to make three votes. Uh, they voted unanimously, uh, to have the, uh, secondary education go to virtual, starting on, uh, the 23rd.
On the 23rd.
Right. All the way through the end of the semester and coming back on the 25th of January. Um, that was done unanimously. There was, um, a second motion after some further conversation, uh, to have fourth through sixth go virtual for that same time period. Uh, that came back six to one in favor, uh, with, uh, school board member Hedrick, uh, voting against. And then there was a lot of conversation about motion number three, and this is where it gets a little bit more complicated, um, as a whole.
Yeah, this, this was a little, a little different, Jason. It started out with, uh, Board Member Julie Doan making, making a motion that K through three would go into virtual learning, but it would only go through January 14th.
No, no, December 14th.
Or December 14th. I apologize. Through December 14th.
Basically, long enough for everybody to get COVID over Thanksgiving and then get over it and get back to school.
Well, and, and that went with the, the, so the two weeks before and the two weeks after, right?
Right.
And then to come back. Well, there was lots of conversation around and then it came to, to Board Member Campbell suggesting an amendment that would, that would change it so that would follow the same timeline as the other, as the other grades. And Jason, here's where I got confused. Here's where they lost me.
Right. This is, and this, I tried to follow this as best I could.
I'm convinced that there were board members that, that didn't quite follow what they were doing.
Right. And, and I would say that there, it, it was a little bit difficult to follow. Um, and this is a note for the R7's audio and AV guys. Few of the board members are a little bit difficult to follow. So you either need to get them closer to their microphones or turn their sound up, um, as a whole. But so what happened in all this, there was a lot of discussion about whether to amend the motion, uh, to do that or not. They ended up not amending the motion and then the motion was withdrawn. Um, and my thought as I was following along is that they were going to then make a new motion to go back to this new, go back to the full length, timeframe of being in virtual. That's what I thought they, that's where I thought they were going. I wasn't sure whether it was gonna pass or not. But then counsel, then Board Member, I believe it was Doan.
Doan offers a new motion.
Offered a different.
And before we say what, before we, we get there, I think the conversation there centered a lot on, on, on three things, I think. One, it, the conversation of it's always best in person. In person is always best, right? So can we, how do we get them the most in-person learning? The other one was, they talked about the teachers and the teachers request that they get the same, that everything's consistent. So that if they're, if all, all the other grades are virtual, then, then, then the K, then the pre-K through three should be, should be virtual too. And then that last component I was, was the, uh, you know, the, the, the care issue that there are a lot of students in that grade level with parents that can't be home. And so what happens? And there was talk about the before and after school program and, and the plan that the district had in its original recommendation, the plan the district had to expand that and make it work. So those things all came into, but then like you said, Jason, all of a sudden, Board Member Doan throws out this motion of K through three will remain in person.
Right. Now this is, this is something that really hadn't actually been discussed in any seriousness as an option.
Right. And I think that's, that's what threw me a little bit there was that it just, it just hadn't had much discussion. And then it goes on and, and Jason, it passes five to two.
Right. Uh, Board Members Marshall and Campbell voted against, the others voted for. And I would say some of them, I mean, if, as much as you can read into anything in the way someone says I or nay, or I or no, uh, a couple of them were, I don't know, I'll call them begrudging, but they certainly, they didn't feel like vigorously excited about voting I on those as well. But in the end, they have passed and pre-K through three is going to continue in person. Now, I want to say, there's a couple of things here and I, I wanna, one, well, let's, let's start with the, let's start with the thing that I, I, it's not a curve ball for you, Nick, that we, we had talked about here. Every time in the last few years, when the superintendent and the board get crosswise on their recommendations, it doesn't really go well for the district.
No. And I think, I, I think also in line with that is, is the disconnect, I think, between the teachers and, and the school board. You know, when it comes to campaigning time, right? The, every, every candidate says it's about the teachers and I'm listening.
But there's an infinite surplus, infinite supply of yay teachers in campaign season.
Right. And here we had, I think, a very concerted effort from the, from the administration to get teacher feedback on this and to, to ask what they wanted and what they thought was gonna be the best, which, yes, it always happens. But I think this was a bigger effort than we've seen in a while. And so to see, to, to, to really see our board members once again, kind of at conflict with the recommendation of the person they hired to run the show. And then also going, getting cross with, with the, with the teachers and kind of what they see and think of as the, as the best thing for the students. And so that's, Jason, I, I know this is a totally different topic area and subject matter than the previous two superintendents we've had in the last several years where, where there's been, they've been crossways, but it just seems to be a common theme. And that's something the school board's gonna have to deal with.
Right. And so I, I would, you know, I, they get the right to make that decision. Now, I want to say a couple of things here. One is, I think they're wrong here. I think the school board made a mistake. I, I will predict, I'm gonna put my little, put my little betting chip down here on this thing. And I make, I make me nervous whenever I do this, right? That these.
I got my finger on the dump button already.
Yeah. These teachers and the students are going to buy, uh, there's going to be way too many of them, I will say that, who are going to go to family gatherings in opposition to the recommendation and guidelines of our local health officials. And there's going to be an outbreak of COVID amongst those in-person students in the timeframe after that. And I think by the time we get to December 14th-ish, we may be revisiting this conversation and, and going virtual simply to stop the spread in the elementary schools. That's my guess.
I, I, I think the, the issue of are they gonna be revisiting this is, is we've, we've learned that they're always gonna be revisiting.
Right. But I think, I think the numbers are gonna be, I mean, look, we're in a community right now where literally this month alone, we have averaged one resident of John Knox Village dying every day in the month of November. Okay? COVID is legitimately in our community. It is all over the place and somebody's gonna, somebody in one of these schools is gonna go visit their grandparent at John Knox Village and they're gonna drag COVID back into their schools. It's gonna happen. We can't avoid it. Except for if we didn't actually have them in the schools themselves. So we have that issue now. All that being said, I think the school districts are in a terrible, terrible position. Okay? This is not on the board or the superintendent, but this is where we are. You know, we've had a lot of conversations in our national community and in our local community about the role of the police and schools in our community and what they can do. And we've talked on this podcast with people from the school district and what have you, that they end up providing this panoply of services to their kids that are the students in the district that aren't on, that were never on the public education bill to start with, right? Food, mental health care, counseling, you know, all these various and sundry services that they deal with. And we, we put too much on them. And now we're asking them, and one of the concerns that was raised by the school board is, well, if we send these third graders home or any of these kids home, who's gonna watch them during the day when the parents have to go to work, right? Who is, you know, who's, how are we gonna make sure that they're being taken care of, right? Is that an extra burden on our teachers to have to sort of look for online signs of neglect or falling, you know, falling in the cracks that we deal with? Early on in the conversation, uh, Board President Murdock said that he had been on a call with the governor amongst other, bunch of school districts and the governor. And essentially, and, and Ryan did not use these words, so I am not putting words in Ryan's mouth. But he very politically and, and well said, without saying these things, what I'm about to say, basically said that the government, governor is gonna do nothing uh, about any of this process. He is pouring it down onto the, the individual local jurisdictions and school districts and, and groups of that nature to make the calls and do that. And he's not gonna do that, which includes apparently the legislature not gonna convene to hand off the last, the last hundred million dollars or whatever it is of the CARES Act funding that they've received. Because this, the legislature can't meet because they got together and they all have COVID. And so they're in isolation and can't hold, uh, they can't hold a legislative session. So the school districts are being put in this horrible vice, right? Between the inaction of governmental agencies and levels above them that could provide relief to people and the people who need these things. They, they, they have to work because of the way things are and, and they don't want, you know, and they're, they're stuck in this spot. So they are in a very, very difficult position. All that being said, I think they should have listened to their superintendent and listened to the recommendation that he made.
Well, the, the other piece of that, 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 uh, Board President Murdock brought up, Jason, and that was, was that in the COVID world that we're in, every decision that they make creates a different problem. There's not, and we've talked about this before, that there is not a right answer. There's, there is no best solution that fixes them all. Um, and, and so I, I, I would agree with you. You, you, you pay a lot of money for a superintendent. We, we created a situation where we had to go find another superintendent and recruit them and pay to come in. That, um, you're paying for him to, to dig up that information and to make the best recommendation possible for the school district. But man, I don't know.
Uh, it's just.
Because, because you do, there's, the, the, the schools do provide a, a daycare of sorts. They provide a place for the kids to go when the parents are working.
Right.
During, during the day. And, and there is the question of, yes, there was a plan to expand the before and after school programs. What was it? Two, 200 in the mornings, but, and by 300 i- in the, in the afternoons. But how can you do that? But you can't do the school. Those are, those are real questions.
Right. These are not burdens that we should be putting on the schools. We should have responses from the federal level on down to make these sorts of things. Make this, this process manageable, right? Whether it's, we, we figure it out so that everybody can stay home for a period of time to short circuit this surge and, uh, that includes the parents home with the kids. And so that, that, that care is being taken at that point. We shouldn't have to burden the school district with making these, you know, these Hobbesian choices. Oh, I just referenced a philosopher and I apologize. I've ruined the podcast forever.
You did that in 2016.
Uh, fair. Uh, but we shouldn't be putting our school boards and our school districts in a situation where you have to make these decisions, but they are. And yet we're not making the decision that honestly gives the fewest people COVID. And that's, that's, that part is, strikes me. And I think that's where, in the end, where the superintendent was leaning. Just, just like, this is the best way to go with this for the benefit of our teachers, for our students, for everybody involved. And I'm not sure that at this point, the board's decision to deviate from that was wise.
Well, looking ahead, I think, I think the things to watch here are, are a, if and when, uh, the, the board and administration will reconvene to, to discuss. I, I, there, I think we, we just know that it's gonna have to happen again as we, as we move forward to get closer to the end of this school year. Well, they, they'll have to reevaluate the numbers, uh, especially for that, for that pre-K through three. And then they're gonna have to reevaluate again because they're gonna have to make sure that the case, case numbers are, are down enough as they move into the, the second semester. The other thing I think to watch, and this goes to Jason, the, the, the heart of why we do the show, which is being informed voters and, and, and active members of the community, is I think we're gonna have to watch again, Jason, this thing that seems to keep happening where the superintendent and the school board aren't seeing eye to eye and are not moving in parallel. And, and look, I'm a firm believer in that a school board should be a check and balance to, to the, to the, to the administration. However, you hire them for a reason and sometimes you just gotta get out of the way.
I, I, I agree. And I think that there's times where they should, you know, um, you can have what we would call creative tension, right? You know, where they, where they have a disagreement or perhaps the superintendent thinks that there's a, a broader pathway forward that could be a number of options. And maybe this is one of them. I mean, it wasn't clear from Dr. Buck's statements other than these are really hard choices and we're doing the best we can, that he was upset. I mean, it wasn't like the situation in, with the equity vote uh, a couple of years ago where, you know, where the then superintendent said, read, but read the buyout clause of my contract and let's get after it, right? In the public board meeting. It wasn't like that or anything. So and we're not trying to sow trouble where there may not be any. But you know, this is a big thing and this is the, you hire your superintendent to be able to make these big, bring the big stuff to you. And, you know, I just not sure that you got.
And I think that, I think that's something to watch because there will be board, there will be a board election coming, coming in, in the spring. And like I said, I think, you know, every single board candidate runs on that they're gonna, you know, that they're all about the teachers, right? And here we have a situation where teacher feedback said, this is what they thought was best. And there was a vote that went against it, that went against what that teacher feedback was and against what the, what the recommendation from the superintendent was. So I think it, it, it's something to watch and something to pay attention to as, as, as we move forward.
Yep. I agree.
Jason, that's gonna wrap us up for, for. Jason, that's gonna wrap us up for, for this week. I hope, I hope on one, Wednesday, next week, we have something fun to talk about.
I'm not gonna hold my breath. I mean, we, I, maybe we should just commit to talking about like our, you know, like Thanksgiving food.
You know what, you know what we're talking about next week, Jason? I'm just gonna spoil.
Thanksgiving tacos.
Spoiler alert. We're gonna be talking about Thanksgiving. And we're gonna be talking about how you can support local business here in our community.
There we go. That sounds good. I think we should do more.
So that's gonna be a good one. Join us next Wednesday for our little local analysis episodes of these Lee Summit Town Hall podcasts. We'll talk to everybody next time.